Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Antigua School Board. We're calling the meeting to order now. We have a tobacco policy in place. There is no smoking within one hundred feet of any school building. Please rise for the pledge. District Clerk, will you please call Rol? Trustee Jerome?
Here.
Trustee Mitchell Morale? Trustee Goodrich?
Here.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Here.
Trustee Ramondo?
Here.
Trustee Story?
Here.
Trustee Bishop?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the tenure and employment of specific employees, the Antia draft settlement, and proposed lease of real property. Trustee Ramondo may have a second. Trustee Lynch? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. We will be back in approximately sixty minutes. Thank you.
May have a motion to exit executive session and return to public session. Trustee Ramondo, second trustee story, all in favor. That's unanimous, thank you. And next on our agenda is our welcome from Principal Scott Richards.
All right, little bit of technical difficulties there, but we got through it. So I just wanted to welcome all of you to Woodstock Elementary. It wasn't that long ago that you were here, so we've got a couple of updates, just a couple of things to kind of tell you what we've been up to. So here we go. As you know, we've had some snow recently, a few snow days. One of the things we love about this school is the fact that we're able to leave the playground, go to the other side of the building, and we're able to play in the snow. And you can see the kids come prepared with snow suits. We sleigh ride, it's an absolute blast. Unfortunate thing is that the snow likes to come and then it likes to melt. So they end up bringing all of that equipment and they get a little upset when the snow melts. I just wanted to just give a little bit of a shout out to Ms. Becker. She's one of our monitors in the building, actually the only monitor that we have in the building. She's very, very artistic and she does take on some projects that go above and beyond. If you walk around the halls, you'll see many bulletin boards that are all designed by Ms. Becker. But she also takes the time to do one school-wide bulletin board that's interactive, has the involvement of every student within the building. And she comes up with different ideas each month, she changes them throughout the year. We just celebrated Martin Luther King Junior Day and she helped create that beautiful bulletin board with the help of our students. Just think it's nice to give her a little shout out, she does a lot for this building. And we also had third grade bulletin boards go up to support Martin Luther King Junior Day as well. The PTA has been and is and continues to be very busy. We do have a bingo night, which is a district-wide event that's coming up this Friday. It was rescheduled from last Friday. We also have the Sweetheart Breakfast on February 14th. That's an opportunity for parents to come in in the morning, have breakfast with their child. Last year, the turnout was through the roof. I think it's just a lot of that is because of COVID and people haven't had the opportunities. So we anticipate quite a large turnout again this year, feel free to stop by. We also have a talent show that we're planning for March 8th. That's being run by the PTA, we have not had a talent show here in a very long time. We do have 23 acts signed up, that can be individual students, groups of students, and we also have many faculty members that are also looking forward to participating in the talent show. I will not be participating, but I will be attending. Our safety patrol is up and running, I believe last time you were here, I believe we had 14 students. We've since added four more. We had a great meeting today about one of the students who's in safety patrol. He was struggling a little bit academically. And he joined safety patrol and we talked to him about the importance of keeping your grades up and really focusing on being in school. And he had some really, really nice results and sort of a really positive meeting about that student today. So it's really just an opportunity for kids to get involved in their school and their community. Our school leadership team has also been focusing on looking for additional ways to involve our students as we're going to transition to a K4, K5 building, looking for ways for our older students to get a little bit more involved in the school and the community and trying to build a positive school environment. We recently added recess helpers, so we have a 30-minute lunch period, which is a pretty long lunch period for elementary students. A lot of the elementary schools I've been in typically have 20-minute lunch periods. So that last 10 minutes can be slightly challenging for some students. So we've instituted recess helpers, so those kids go out, they play a little bit with the K1 students at the end of recess, and then they help them pick up the equipment, bring the equipment back into the building. It's been a huge help to the adults out there and the kids feel really great helping out. We've also been doing more reading buddies this year with third grade going down and reading with first grade students. And school leadership team continues to meet and talk about the transition to K4 and K5. Today, we also held fancy lunch, this is an older picture. We added fancy lunch, it was something we did in my prior school district. It's just a nice way to recognize kids who are being safe, respectful, responsible. We set up tables in the corner over there in the cafeteria. We have teacher volunteers who take the food from the cafeteria, cafeteria is great. They put the food on actual plates, not on the school lunch trays. And then we serve each of the students at their table. We have music, we have a maître d', waitresses, we pour the milks for them, it's a big deal, there's music. You could hear a pin drop in the cafeteria when fancy lunch is going on. So it's been a huge hit, I think we've done six of them so far. So the goal is to do about two per month. Just, you know, creates a nice, nice school environment. Tower gardens are up and running, we have three tower gardens now. We have three different variations of pea plants in the tower gardens right now. Ideas that once they sprout and we're able to pick them, we'll feed them to the students here in the cafeteria. Kind of a little bit of a takeoff in our old Tri-It Tuesday that we used to do with the PTA. We're also working on getting yoga residency up and running, I actually got the paperwork today. We've been doing this, we've done this a couple times. It's a two-week residency with a yoga instructor, she's in the PE classes, she provides instruction to the students. It's really positive, kids love it. So we're really excited, hopefully get that up and running again this year. If you get a chance today, when you take a break, second grade classrooms are right outside this door to the left. There's a bunch of their nonfiction writing up on the bulletin boards. They write for an audience, so feel free to be their audience. And as far as professional development goes, we've been busy with that as well. We have some illustrative math training coming up for our superintendent conference day. David Tranter continues to support the work that we do in those large group settings. He then comes in, meets with each grade level and kind of processes through some of those trainings. We recently had restorative practice training with Marikee from Morningside. She's also been working with the Phoenisha staff and students and she's been working closely with me to tell us and kind of inform us on what types of things she's working on. And she's been working on dealing with change. That's something that all kids can benefit from, so she's shared those resources with us. So it's kind of like adding an additional unit to the curriculum. Teachers College this year, third grade has been going up in training with the fourth grade, so that's creating a nice transition plan for when those fourth grade teachers do come here to Woodstock or when those third and fourth grade teachers from Phoenisha meet in Bennett. That's been very positive and we're also continuing to work on our MTSS plan as a large committee that's been put together. They're doing a lot of work and we're really excited to see the finished product. So with that, have a great meeting.
Thank you so much. Moving on to agenda item 4.01, we have another presentation. This one is our preliminary state aid and enrollment projections. And that's being presented by our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Monica LeClaire.
Thank you very much. So for those of you that have read the budget calendar, you will notice that the tonight's presentation was supposed to just be on enrollment. But I'm sure all of you, if not most of you, know that the governor released her budget a little early this year. And it contained a few things that I thought were important to bring to you now. So we'll start with the state aid update. So as an overall, we're looking at approximately $4.3 billion deficit in the budget when she started. Statewide, she did say that she would grow aid, school aid, at 825 million. Back in November, when we received our initial database, it was 1.2 billion. So and in addition to that, of that 825 million, there's 100 million for new pre-K monies. So really, we're looking at a $725 million increase to foundation aid versus the 1.2 billion that we were told we were going to get back in November. So what changed? So the first thing that the governor did was actually reduce the inflation factor. So there's an inflation factor that gets added to foundation aid because obviously we have inflation. So it was supposed to be, I believe, 3.4 and she reduced it to 2 point something. So it was supposed to be, I believe, 3.4, and she reduced it to 2 point something. So you reduce the inflation factor, obviously you reduce the amount of foundation aid. And in addition to that, what really affects us is the reduction of the Save Harmless. Pretty much every budget season, I stand up here, and when we talk about state aid, we talk about Save Harmless. Foundation aid formula was put in place, and it was held there. We were then told for the last many, many years that they would not take any money away from us, but don't expect a lot more because we are overfunded in foundation aid. However, in her trying to create a balanced budget, she has started reducing the Save Harmless for certain schools, anywhere from 50%, which is the minimum, to 91% for school districts, which is the most. So yeah, that's where we are. So what does that mean for us? So in '23-'24, our foundation aid is a little over $7.8 million. If the foundation aid formula were to run the way it was supposed to run, our foundation aid for '24-'25 should be $1.7 million, which means we are $6 million overfunded in foundation aid, according to the state's formula. So their transition adjustment, the minimum of the 50%, is the $3,25,351. So that leaves out of that 7.8 that we're getting this year, projecting to be 4.79 next year. So what is that? That's a 38.5% decrease. So yeah. As you know, foundation aid is the largest state aid that we have, the largest part of our state aid. The rest are all expense-driven aids. So the other aids, we get based on what we spend. This is the only aid that we get based on just aid. Our hope is that when the legislative budget is released, these numbers will change. So just kind of, and don't spend too much time on this because it makes no sense. This is, these are some of what, some of the factors that kind of go into our foundation aid. The thing to notice is that our combined wealth ratio for a state average should be 1. Ours is almost 2.5. So that's one of the, one of the factors. If you look at the total wealth per pupil, New York State average is 779,000. We're at over 2.6 million. So this is where the numbers are coming from that tell the state, because all they do is look at numbers, that we are wealthy and that we get too much aid. So in looking at planning for the '24-'25 budget, again, it's the governor's budget. We still, there is still hope that the legislative budget will, will put more of the foundation aid in. But, you know, what are the things that we can do? We really are limited in that we can reduce our expenditures. That's, you know, one thing. We can increase our revenues. You know, we are, we have the tax levy. Obviously, we have a tax levy cap. If we, 1% of our levy currently is about $460,000. So to just gain what we lose in, in the governor's budget for state aid is almost, is approximately a 6.5% tax levy increase, which will be well above the tax cap. So not something we would like to do, I'm sure. Obviously, another way we could increase revenue is if we have potential lease income, or like I said, the potential increase in aid from the legislative budget. Another option would be to use some of our fund balance. I would caution the board to use a lot of fund balance because fund balance is one-time revenue. It's like saying, okay, you know, I'm, my salary is $100,000. My expenses are $150,000, so I'm just going to pull $50,000 out of my savings. Well, at some point, you're going to, if you pull it out of your savings every year, you're not going to have any savings left, and you're still going to have $150,000 of expenses with $100,000 of revenue. So we are very cautious about using fund balance. And then, again, we can do any combination of, of the above. So, so that's pretty much it for the state aid budget. Does anybody have any specific questions? I did want to mention one thing, I think. No, maybe not that, but, does anybody have any specific, yes?
Uh, is it okay? Thank you. Thanks so much. Just a quick question or clarification. The transition adjustment of 50% that you mentioned here, do we know that that's where Antioa is? Or do, because I know it's between 50 to 91%.
Right, so per the governor, we're at that 50%.
We do know that. That's been confirmed.
Yes, that's been confirmed.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know if it was just a projection. Thank you.
But understand that we don't know when or if she'll take the other 50%. Anyone else?
Anybody else have questions?
Okay, so, so again, this is a conversation that will continue as we get more information. We are looking to lobby. Niskus is lobbying, NISBA is lobbying, ASBO is lobbying, everyone's lobbying because it's, there's approximately 300 school districts that are looking to lose foundation aid. And then just as a side note, a lot of them are rural schools, and a lot of them are schools that have heavy, heavy second homeowners. Lake George, Pine Plains, Teconic Hills are the ones that are really losing. And if you look at the, this is interesting, if you look at the list of who's losing the most dollar-wise out of all the schools losing money, we're number seven. So yeah, we're losing, it's, when you consider how many schools are in New York State. So just moving on to enrollment, which is kind of what tonight's presentation was originally meant for. To start off with, as you can see, that Antioa makes up, makes up, comprised of six towns and two counties. So I won't go over what the methodology is. You can read that on your own, but, and you can tell it's, you know, a pretty complicated thing that I'm glad I don't have to do. So I wanted to kind of show you what the cohort survival rates, because this is something that gets kind of complicated. So I know people look at the survival rates, and they think, you know, did my kids survive? But it's really the movement of a grade population from one year to the next. So it's not whether the student has survived physically, but have they survived that grade? Have they moved to, have they stayed in the district from kindergarten and moved to first grade? And this is really where Antioa is unique, because if you look, there's some green, there's some white, there's some red. But there's really no rhyme or reason to it. So the red means that we are less than 100%, meaning we, less kids went to the, to the next grade. Green means that more kids went to the next grade. And then white is pretty much standard, like between 99 and 100 and something. So what, so, so what Forecast 5 tries to do is take the cohort survival rates historically and try to predict what's going to happen in the future. So given that, as you can tell, there really is not a lot of rhyme or reason to Antioa's cohort survival rates, it makes predictions very difficult. There are some things that you can kind of tell, like in the, in the future years, once you get into kind of six, seven, eight, it seems to be relatively white or green. But when you get to the higher grades, like 10, it tends to be a little more red and white. Well, except for if you look at '22, '23, 12th grade is 109%. Like, kids just moved. We don't know why. They move out as easily as they move in, as we kind of talked about in, in last year. So, so this is, this is the enrollment history and projection based on those cohort survival rates. Again, as I said, it's, it's not an exact science by any means, but it does, it does at least give us an idea of what we're looking at. So '23-'24, we're looking at 156 kids. This is all based on Beds Day because obviously it changes on a daily basis, so you kind of have to pick, you know, a certain date and time. So schools have, that's why schools have Beds Day, and things are basically based on Beds Day. But we are projecting by the '27-'28 to get below 1,000 kids. Actually, 961. So in kind of looking at it, pretty chart there, in kind of looking at it as a, from a building perspective, so this would be K-3. As you can see, there is a slight incline, or there is looking to be a slight increase. But again, they're, they're actually projecting kindergarten classes of, in the 70s. Well, as you know, we were projected to have, or maybe you don't know, we were projected to have 77 this year. We had 60. So based on, because they, again, they're basing it on five years ago, this is how many babies were born in your school district. And so we don't know where they went. I also, I just wanted to briefly mention that there were some questions around second grade, mostly second grade here in Woodstock. So Sharon did review the second grade numbers, and we did have four students that were at the age that they could actually be in third grade. So the thought is, is that, again, because of COVID, for whatever reason, you know, parents did tend, did, some of them did hold their kids back. So there's also that that you really can't account for. So 4-6, again, we're looking at some pretty major declines in 4-6. 7-8 will be some of our biggest declines. Again, our, our biggest declines kind of happened in the elementary school, and they're starting to work their way now up through the middle school, high school. So what I then did is, okay, what with K-5? So as you can see, K-5 actually kind of levels out. So by bringing the fourth and fifth graders together, we're actually starting to level out the, the enrollment. 6-8 kind of looks the same. 9-12 is where we're really going to see the biggest hit in the next few years. Mr. Edelman had mentioned that in his presentation. He is trying to prepare for it as far as still being, you know, being able to give our kids what they need to graduate and give them the experiences, but it's going to get harder and harder as we have 321 kids, that's less than 100 kids per grade. So as I mentioned, enrollment projections are not an exact science. I can't, I can't tell you I'm going to be here '27-'28, and that's what our number's going to be. Could be less, it could be more. I will tell you that, again, historically, the projections that we've been given, we end up lower. So they, you know, they do tend to project high. You know, again, we don't know. You do have, I believe, the NISBA article in front of you that was actually very interesting on declining fertility rates in New York State. You know, obviously, we aren't having as many babies born. So, and then just kind of a few things that I noticed, as I mentioned, '23-'24, we were supposed to get 77 kindergarteners. We have 60. But the other interesting thing to note, that we had 50, we had 83 fifth graders. No, '23-'24, oh yeah, we had 80, we were supposed to have 83 fifth graders. We actually have 93 fifth graders. We don't, again, they didn't, they just came. So, but then we had 95 seventh graders enrolled last year, but we only have 77 eighth graders. So that's, and then again, that's where the cohort survival rate gets so difficult to, to use because it's so unpredictable. And as I said, so last year's projection for '23-'24 was 1,075 kids on Beds Day, and we have 1,056. So we're about 20 less than what we originally projected for this year. So I believe that's it. So any other questions about enrollment? Yes?
Trustee Lynch?
Thank you. Just so I understand, this is, this data was used, has been, what we've been using, correct?
Yes.
I would say this, the numbers change, but this is the same
Correct.
dataset that we've been using.
Same methodology, yeah.
And the, and it's utilized by, it's coming from SED primarily, or is it?
Well, the historic, you mean, the
Department of Education, sorry.
The, the actual methodology is coming from Forecast 5, which is a, I guess I'm not understanding your question.
Yeah, that's right. Forecast 5 is like a, a for-profit company?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're, they're an analytical company that we use.
Thank you.
Trustee Goodrich?
Great job on collecting all this data. So if you go to Chart 1 there, District Wide Enrollment History and Projection.
That one?
Yeah, so, you know, you look at the kindergarten class, all right? 2013, 116, next 2014, we had 96, 87, 80, 79, 79, 85, 79, and then it starts falling off. 67, 65, 60. And now you're projecting it's going to go up.
Yes, because they're
Yeah, so it's, it's hard to believe.
Yeah, it is, but
But on the, on the good news is it's better to be high, projecting higher than lower. So I like that part. But it's, it's kind of scary that, you know, you're, you're seeing this declining at least for three years, four years, and, and now you're, you're saying it's going to go up.
It is.
But that's, that's a prediction, right? And kindergarten registration has been going on for a number of weeks now, and I'm curious, do we have a, a projection?
It's actually part of my news. So we currently have identified 55 potential kindergartners, and that is through students that we are aware of already because of their families, or they're in UPK. But of those 55, only 11 have actually completed the registration process at this time. So although some may ultimately decide to register in a private school setting, we are hoping that they will choose to attend Antioa and that they will complete their registration soon.
Any other questions for Ms. LeClaire? Thank you, Monica. On to Item 5.01, the Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of the January 11th, 2024 meeting. May I have a first? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Jerome. And we will do a roll call vote. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? All right. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. On to the superintendent's report.
Good evening. So what we are all very much hoping for would be some consistency in our school weeks. I do need to say that I am so thankful that our community understands the issues that weather creates for us, and that they understand that we are, of course, making these decisions at 4:30 in the morning based on the current conditions and the forecast as we understand it. And although sometimes the decisions are incredibly clear-cut and easy, there are other times when they are very difficult. But please know that I always make decisions that are on the side of safety. I don't ever make light of calling a snow day, understanding that students are then home for the day, families' lives are disrupted. Often, it creates a lot of difficulty. But I will always believe that if the weather forecast indicates that it would be dangerous for our students to be on the road, then I will not, I will not put them on the road. This morning, several of us participated in a webinar that was hosted by the New York State Council School Superintendents to discuss the implications of the governor's executive budget, as Ms. LeClaire was explaining. And as we have been noting for many years, as she said, the foundation aid formula is very outdated, and our demographics have shifted significantly, significantly since its inception. We have been fortunate to have been under the Save Harmless provision that's been in place, and that the governor is now proposing to eliminate. And as Ms. LeClaire noted, the loss of, of that $6 million of aid over the course of two years would potentially be very devastating to us and to the programs that we offer, and that this year's projected loss of aid equates to a tax levy increase of approximately 6.5%. And that is before we take any other budget increases into account. And I think the thing that makes this most difficult is that when I first became an administrator, our state aid was much more volatile. Every year, it was really a shock and a surprise. But at that time, we did not have the tax levy limit in place. So there were years when we would raise our tax levy 8, 9, 10% to account for that, and we were able to do that. And so if we And so if we could illustrate to our community what programs that would support, it was easy to, to propose that and have it be passed with a simple majority, and that is no longer an option for us. And so I think it is really unfair that the governor would take away aid to that degree and not allow us a way to recover from that. So we are definitely going to be discussing this with our elected representatives and providing them with the information they need to advocate on our behalf. And as Ms. Leclaire said, this surprised everyone in the state, and so all of our organizations, all of our professional organizations are really dedicated to, to advocating for us. So as everyone probably knows, we are in Regents Week, and I need to extend my appreciation to our high school administrators and faculty because the weather has required them to shift and modify the schedule for Regents as well as midterm exams multiple times. I know that they try to be incredibly thoughtful when they create the schedule, and while sometimes conflicts are unavoidable for some students, they really do their best to try and be strategic and make the most logical schedule so that they can limit that stress for our students. But each delay in snow day for the past two weeks has caused them to rethink and rework the schedule, and, and I just very much appreciate it. So I would also like to encourage everyone to come out on Friday, February 2nd for our Community Night. It will be a wonderful opportunity to celebrate our students, our district, and our community. I believe there are two senior athlete recognition programs that night. I think so. I think it's wrestling and basketball, I believe. I could be wrong, but there's lots of promotional materials on social media, and I think it'll be a great evening. I already mentioned our kindergarten registration. Although, so for COVID test kits, New York State has stopped providing us with COVID test kits, but we were provided information on how to order them from the federal government. And we have taken advantage of that process, and we have received test kits which are being distributed to our building nurses so that if any students go home, they can be given test kits to take home so that their families will know. In terms of an update on our transition process, our muralist has been to both Bennett and Fenicia to meet with our students and engage in discussions about the design of the murals. I believe Assistant Superintendent Laffin was part of a number of those discussions, and the students were really, really excited and happy to participate and really, really just getting excited about the process. Our elementary transition committee meeting for January was originally scheduled for last week, but was postponed due to weather, but thankfully, we know about winter in Antioa, so when we created the schedule, we included snow dates, and we will be meeting next week for our January meeting. Our middle school principal will be meeting with fifth grade parents very soon. I believe he has sent out an invitation for February 8th, and that will be an opportunity for those parents to come and meet him and see the middle school and have their first introduction. He is also in the process of creating the orders for the new middle school furniture. The vendor provided designs, and they were finalizing them with our faculty and going over what each classroom would look like and making sure that it was what the faculty had envisioned, so those orders will be created shortly. The playground equipment purchase order was approved and issued for the vendor for the new playground equipment to be installed at Bennett. And so our current plan is to have a modified community build in the spring, which is really fun. More details will come when we have confirmation and delivery dates. And also, our middle school principal let me know that he has two committees meeting to review Science and Social Studies textbooks that will be used for the sixth grade when they move up. The Science textbooks are likely to be in the same series that's currently used in seventh and eighth grade so that they are aligned. And right now, they don't have a Social Studies series that's consistent, so they will be looking at those, and they will be hopefully coming to bring their recommendations to the board in May so that we can then get the textbooks ordered after they have been approved. And according to our schedule, we, we're hoping to be able to award the transportation contract this month, but we did just have the bid opening, and we just need to analyze it, and then hopefully we'll be able to award in February.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent McLaren? Great. Thanks, everyone. Okay, on to board district news. Do any trustees have news to share? Okay, I have a little news to share. Superintendent McLaren and I received an email this week from Robert Curran, our BOCES board member who represents Antioa on the BOCES board. And he was informing us that he is not interested in being nominated this year and has served 18 years on the BOCES board on behalf of Antioa. So we will be considering nominations and making a nomination by March, I can't remember the date, the 18th, March 18th. So, uh, he did go into a little detail about what, what makes a good BOCES board trustee. And they've found that the, they're, the best BOCES board trustees are trustee, are trustees that are also currently board trustees in other districts. Next best are former trustees from other districts that are now BOCES board trustees. And finally, there are educators, teachers, people who have not had experience as a board trustee before, but start their board experience as a BOCES trustee. And they just need a little extra support. So, you know, keeping that in mind, I think we'll be able to find an excellent candidate to nominate. Any questions about that? Okay, great. Nothing else? Okay. Trustee Story?
I will, I'm interested in sitting on the BOCES board, so if we-
So trustee Story is a potential nominee, and, you know, we can take that into consideration and make a, a formal nomination, you know, prior to, maybe sometime in February. Okay? Thanks, everybody. Thank you, trustee Story. On to item 8.01, acknowledgement of public beheard comments. We did not have any public beheard comments at our last meeting. Do we have anybody signed up tonight? Okay. So we, we do not have any public beheard comments tonight, so I'm not going to read the, the statement that goes along with that. So we'll move on to item 10.01, the approval of the consent agenda. The board hereby approves items number 10.02 through 10.06. May I have a first? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Lynch? Any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Okay, we'll vote. Trustee, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, Schedule U. Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, everything is in order, thank you.
Great, thank you. Moving ahead too fast. Okay, trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Okay, great, that's unanimous, thank you. So on to item 11.01, the first reading of policy 6125 Workplace Violence Prevention. I'm curious if trustees had an opportunity to read this policy. This, uh, this policy was, superintendent, would you mind telling us how this policy came to us?
Sure. So workplace violence prevention has been required in the state for the private sector, but it just became applicable for schools at the end of 2023. And with that requirement came sort of a list of things that school districts need to have in place, the first being this policy. NISBA created the policy and sent it to us. Technically, it should be in place by, I believe, February 4th. So while we have it on the agenda as a first reading, that would mean that our second reading and adoption would be February 6th at our next meeting. I know the policy committee read it very thoroughly, along with a couple of other policies that kind of work alongside this policy. And I did ask if the board would be comfortable, they could consider, you could consider waiving it and doing the second reading and adoption tonight. I think if for some reason anyone on the board is not comfortable with that, if we did it on February 6th, I think we have cer- certainly shown that we are looking to comply, but it would be wonderful if we would be able to adopt it this evening.
Trustee Story? So typically, we would take some time between this board meeting and the next board meeting to thoroughly review this policy. But it sounds like everybody has read the policy, and I'm just curious, does anybody have any questions about the policy as written? Trustee Story?
My question came back. This is a clear-cut policy from NISBA that we have, the policy committee has not rerooted, and so this is clear as day from stuff that has to be included in policy.
Yes, this was drafted by NISBA. The policy committee reviewed it thoroughly, but did not recommend any changes.
So, and we, for the general public to understand, we pay NISBA to do the policies, to write the policies that are all legally correct and legalese and everything like that.
Yes, the NISBA attorneys all help create the policies that are required.
So this is not a big deal of waiving a first reading.
Is there anybody that would disagree with, so we would take a vote on this? Right? And so do we have consensus to consider voting on this? Okay. So, um, let's see, the wording would be that we are waiving the second reading?
I believe it would be, um, wait, can I take, let me just do some research. I don't want to say something incorrect.
Thanks. Sure. Shall we take a five-minute break? While we do a little research? Okay, let's make it a quick five-minute break, though, okay? All right, we'll be back in five minutes, not a, not a 10-minute, five-minute break. Thank you. Okay, we are back from our break, and so on item 11.01, the Board of Education hereby waives the second reading of policy 6125 Workplace Violence Prevention. May I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second. Trustee Story? Any questions or comments? Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you, everyone. We're on to item 12, well, item 12 is committee reports. And we have a number of committees, and do we have any reports on committees that have met? Trustee Story?
The Facilities Committee last, met last week here, as a matter of fact. It was a short meeting because we toured our building. We went over, because our last meeting in December was quite in-depth, and my last report was quite in-depth. But this time, we went around, did our tour around here, and that was about it.
Great, thank you. Trustee Lynch?
Thank you, just a question. Trustee Story, I'm, I'm sorry I was out of town for the meeting last week, but I listened. And I heard you talk about the challenge of, of getting approval by SED by February for the middle school gym and the other pre-approved plans that we had for that construction cost. I just wondered, as we're thinking about the legislative agenda, is there anything that we can do to help you and the Facilities Committee and the administration?